Good evening. I call the September 12th, 2023 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Trapp?
Mrs. Nash?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for the September 12th, 2023 Regular Schedule Board Meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by, was that Mrs. McFadden? To approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
A question first, and then a comment and motion. It was my understanding at our last meeting that Mrs. Porter had asked to have the absentee policy brought back up again for a discussion. It was my understanding when you and I talked about it, asking for a board vote, you had said as board chair, you were going to ensure that it was put on the agenda because you want it on the agenda, but it's not on the agenda.
Mrs. Porter didn't bring it up at our planning meeting, so I guess it was overlooked.
So since she didn't address it, but you had assured us it was going to be put on the agenda, but it's not on the agenda?
It looks that way.
Okay. All right. And my next motion is I'd like to make a motion to remove item 8.1, Policy Proposal for J H C B from the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that seconded by Mrs. Porter?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion to amend the agenda to remove policy or item 8.1, Policy Proposal for Policy J H C B. Release time for religious instructions. Motion was made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
Since our last meeting, per policy, B E D B, Board Agenda, it states that there are two ways for a board member to get items placed on the agenda. One is by a motion, the second is by a written request from three board members. You received requests from three board members to have an action item put on this agenda regarding a proposal for policy J H C B with the intent of whether we were going to move forward or not. You did not honor that request. Instead, you sent to the board an email saying that three people sent to you an email requesting that we put this policy proposal on the agenda. And I'm somewhat confused because there are supposed to be three people sending it to you as board chair and the superintendent, but you as board chair were one of the three people that I've been told sent in an email. So as I've been accused before by a board member of having a bias, to me, you not honoring the request of the other board members, you could have at least put both of these on there, but you failed to do so, and you have gone with your own bias because you want this policy written. So I would like to see this removed. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may address one, one point, it seemed as if you asked a question. Board policy, the board policy we recently updated that you mentioned, this board policy, B E D D, is that correct?
It's B E D B, and I have it right in front of me if you would like to.
And it says that if three board members make a request, it will be added to a future agenda. It does not say that you can pick the date. It's just for future agenda, and that's for the superintendent and the board chairman to decide when it is best to discuss it. It's just that simple. If we wanted, if you wanted the item added and you wanted to put a specific date, a motion could have been made at the last board meeting, and a majority could have put it on the board or put it on the meeting, whatever date you chose. In this situation, our board policy does not allow three people to control the agenda. The agenda is set by the superintendent and the board chairman. Next board meeting, the plan is to have exactly what you've asked for, a action item on this particular subject. It's just that simple. It's logical to approach it the way we did right now, for us to have a first reading, and then next, next board meeting, we can have a, have a discussion and a vote on a policy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Each email that came to you was very specific in the date of the September 12th, 2023 board meeting, yet you failed to include it. Thank you.
And board policy is very specific with the word "future." Future is not a specific date. Future means that it can be put on there at a meeting whenever the superintendent and the chairman feel it's the appropriate time to do it. It would be illogical to have it before we had a reading.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
You just stated that it was just that simple, that if we specified the date, it would be on there. It's just that simple. And then you followed with saying, "We have to follow a policy that says something different." Which one is it, please?
Be more specific in your question, if you don't mind.
You just stated to Ms. Agostini that it was just that simple, that if we wanted it on a specific date, it should be on, the request should have the specific date. Well, then Ms. Agostini stated to you that they were very specific, and, and then you gave a different response.
The three emails requested a date, but those three emails do not get to choose a date. They simply get to ensure that the voice of the minority is heard, and the voice of the minority wanted to add an item to the agenda, and it will be added to a future agenda. If we are unhappy with the policy as it is written, I would suggest we change it so that it reflects that you don't, that it take out the word "future" and put "specific date." Rearrange the language. The language is very clear. Future is not a specific date. And again, the superintendent and the board chair decide on how we proceed as far as when an item is presented. It says in the policy that if three board members send in a request for an item to be added to the agenda within a fiscal year, so automatically, we're talking about a long period of time. Again, if we want to do something different, but we have a motion on the table. The motion is to remove the item from the agenda. Is there any discussion? I would like to say something regarding that, but I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak first, because I have been accused of bias in some emails.
Mr. Chair?
Did someone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Porter?
I just want to make a point, and that is that what you're explaining is the exact thing that we had an issue with when that policy was created. And it was with our board, our previous board chair making a decision with the superintendent, and, and that is kind of how that policy came about. And it was a problem at that time for some board members, and it seems as though it's, it's not anymore. And I just wanted to make that point, that it's, it sounds very familiar, and so I would like for us to be a bit more consistent. I think if you had a request with specific dates, knowing that it would come up again during this board meeting, it would be logical for you to place it on the agenda, knowing that you had three board members that requested a specific date.
Well, if I, if I may elaborate on some things contained in emails, a specific board member emailed me and I guess a few other people. In fact, the email was actually sent out to everybody, where they requested at some point in time, they would like to see an item on the agenda to either, to ask the administration to draft a policy related to this or remove it from discussion. We already have a policy, so it makes absolutely, it is, it is no point in having a motion to remove, to draft a policy when we have policies provided us by the School Board Association as well as the policy that was considered in 2016. Again, we have, we have a motion on the table. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Mrs., Dr. Scott?
Yes, just a question. You stated that we already have a policy. I thought we were getting ready to discuss a policy. We don't already have one, so are you referring to the policy we're getting ready to discuss?
Yes, ma'am. We have, we have a draft. That's what I was referring to, the draft policy.
Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Mr. Chairman, I just had, I have one comment.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
Early on, when we first had this discussion, I myself asked that we draft a policy, and we were told that that was something that we couldn't do. And later, we went on. So this is exactly what board members asked for, and I believe that Ms. McFadden also asked for it that next time and was told the same thing too. We couldn't do it because of the motion. But in the policy, it says that you can direct the administration to do a policy. And so before those emails were ever sent, in a board meeting, public, on public record, we did ask for a policy to be drafted in that meeting, and I actually was cut off and said, "We can't have more, we, everybody's talked twice." So I just want to make that statement, that that occurred.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. The only thing I wish to add to this conversation at this point, which has nothing to do with if I would vote for a policy or if I would not vote for a policy, the reality of the situation is we have a policy available that we can choose to move forward with or not. If we remove it from the agenda tonight, I, I think everyone needs to be aware that removing it from the agenda is, is basically taking it away. It's taking away an opportunity for us to decide if we want the policy or not, and the reality is those of us that want to move forward and review this policy, we at least have the potential to say that we want the policy. If we remove it from the table tonight, those that vote to remove it, remove it from our agenda tonight, those that vote to remove it are in essence trying to kill it, and, and there's no reason to think that, that you're, you're not going to vote for it when it was on the agenda. So let's just make sure we're clear on that. This, this is a vote to kill this thing, okay? Is there any other discussion?
Just for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for what you just shared. So now I'm a little confused because did we ever take a vote to have it added to the agenda? I know it's my understanding that when you want something added to the agenda, a board member or someone from the public can request that, but that request must go to the superintendent, and then the superintendent take it back to the board chair, and then they discuss it and bring it back to the board. So were those steps followed properly?
As far as I can determine, everything was done properly here. Is there a specific part that you think was not done properly?
Well, no, I'm asking your question.
And, and my answer is, as far, in my understanding of policy and procedure, we have done this appropriately. I've went back and looked at other board meetings, and this is the same way we have done, approached other policies.
No, that's not my question. My question was, to have the release time, was there a written statement? According to policy, it must be a written statement. So was a written statement provided to Dr. Moore, where Dr. Moore shared it with you, and then you shared that with the entire board stating that there are community members that would like to have this added to the agenda? That's the proper order and procedure. So I want to know if that was done. I would love to receive a copy of the written request that was sent to Dr. Moore, because I don't know if other board members received that, and they may have, but I know I have not. So my question is, can you provide as the board chair a copy tonight, or go back through your email, or ask Dr. Moore, since she's here with us, did she receive a written correspondence to ask that release time be placed on the agenda, and then did she share that with you as the chair and with the other board members who attend the agenda meeting back in August? That's my question.
Mr. Trapp?
And I'll be honest, I'm not really sure. That, that was a very multifaceted question. We have a policy that was given to us by the School Board Association.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes, ma'am.
With all due respect.
I was speaking, but yes, ma'am.
Yeah, with all due respect, that's the policy. So what I'm asking is, did we get the written request? Dr. Moore, did Dr. Moore receive the written request? Did Dr. Moore take the written request to you, and that you share that with colleagues at the August agenda meeting? That's just a simple yes or a simple no. Because according to policy and board conduct that we, you guys, because I didn't vote for it, board conduct talks about this. So I'm trying to ask a question, and I'm hoping we didn't violate the same policy that we have put in place for board conduct, as well as the IG report talked about previous board members not following policy and procedure. So I want to make sure that we follow policy and procedure. So is it a simple yes or no?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
But, so can you provide, or Dr. Moore?
I'm sure I can. I have 500 emails in my box.
Well, not emails.
I won't be able to find it right now, but I'm pretty sure it's in there.
Then the question can be to Dr. Moore. Dr. Moore, do you have a written request that was shared with you, asking that religious release time be placed on the agenda? Because it comes to you first, and then is your order to now take it and share with the board chair, and then the board chair shares at the next meeting with whomever decided to attend the agenda meeting. So my question is now directed to the superintendent, Dr. Moore. Dr. Moore, did you receive a written request asking for release time to be placed on the agenda? Because that's policy. And if we're going to follow policy, I need, hold up, Ms. Nash. If we're going to answer policy, then I want the question answered, because that is policy.
That answer is yes.
Mrs. Porter, did I, did I hear you with? Ms. McFadden, did you have something you want to add?
Ms. McFadden, before you answer, would you please allow the superintendent to answer my question, please?
Point of order.
With a yes or no?
Point of order. Mr. Chairman, we're supposed to direct all questions through the chairman.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you could direct my question to the superintendent about whether or not she received?
I'm not going to ask, I'm not going to interrogate her in front of.
That's not interrogating her. We're following policy.
It is. I don't expect her to remember every email she received either.
Again, it's not email. It's a written state, and you know?
Is email not written?
I hope you guys see what's going on. I hope you see what's going on. Policy and procedure was not followed. That's why my answers are not, my questions are not being addressed. And we talk about setting an example for principals, for district office staff, for students, but yet we get up here and we don't set the example. So we can't be critical of anyone else below us, because we're the top level, and if we can't follow directives, if we can't follow policy and procedures, if we can't set an example, we sure can't expect anyone else to set it. Thank you.
Mr. Trapp?
Mrs. McFadden?
I would like to say that there was a written request by myself for this to be placed, a policy to be placed on the agenda for tonight. I sent it to Dr. Moore, and I sent it to Mr. Trapp. They're, they're responsible for handling that, and they did. I know that others have. It specifically says, "The policy for release time to be placed on the agenda," did not specify. However, there were three emails that came through, to my knowledge, that supported it. It does appear that it would be, the best way to go about it is to view the policy before we kill it, or view it and then take a vote on it. How are we going to take a vote on something that we have not seen or looked at as a body?
Thank you. Is there any other comments before we take a vote?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
I'm only going to piggyback on what Dr. Scott said. I actually did request from you earlier today, and actually on Sunday, too, the three email requests that you received. I spoke to our superintendent, who informed me that you were one of the people that requested it. So I do question how you can be one of the three that submits it, but your response to me in a text was, "I did receive your email. I'm not going to forward emails to you that were sent to me by other board members." And I reminded you that we are a public entity, and this can be FOIA. It is public information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other discussion?
Call for the vote, please.
Let's call for the vote. Do we have?
The motion is correct, and I have just been booted out of the system, so I'll have to use my hand.
Mr. Trapp? I would suggest that we wait until Ms. Agostini's computer is up so that there'll be a vote that we can see.
I, I agree. Let's wait just a moment so that it's accurate.
Thank you, I'm good.
Has everyone voted? The vote is four yes, three no. The motion carries. Item 8.1 has been removed from the agenda. We will move to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chair, do we need to go back to the original motion over proven?
Thank you. We do. All right, who made the original motion to? Okay. All right, we had a motion by Mrs. Angela Nash, seconded by Mrs. McFadden, to approve the agenda. So we will, we're up, we are voting on that with, with the item 8.1 removed. Board members, please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's the same on my screen, but it's the, it still says to approve the, oh, there it is. Sorry. Thank you, guys.
Okay, yes. The vote is five yes, two no. The motion carries. May I have a motion go into Executive Session?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Washington?
I make a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing receipt of legal advice regarding release time, release time for religious instruction, contractual matter regarding the easing and purchasing of properties, contractual matter regarding board legal services, student appeal, admission into the district's adult ed program, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Porter.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
Would it be necessary to, to do 3.3, I'm sorry, 3.2, legal advice regarding the release time, since we have now killed it?
No. No, we removed it from the agenda, but.
Well, in executive session, we have a 3.1 where we are, I'm sorry, 3.2, where we're supposed to be receiving legal advice about it.
We can still receive the legal advice. We removed 8.1, which is not, which is a different, a different item. So no, that, that doesn't need to happen.
Thank you.
Is the motion correct, Mrs. Washington? Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, one no. The motion carries. The board will now enter Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
I move that we adjourned Executive Session at 6:42 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Ms. Nash? Oh, Miss White. All right, motion was made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Washington, to come out of Executive Session. All right, board of members, please vote.
The motion says 6:30 on the screen. It's supposed to be 6:42.
Oh.
Okay.
I see the change. Sorry.
All right, no problem. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move to the inspirational, we will now move on to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I will ask Mrs. Lindsay Agostini to introduce tonight's guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Stacy Gadsden, the principal at Rice Creek Elementary. He's been there for 18 years, or he's actually been with Richland too, excuse me, for 18 years, and starting his ninth year as principal at Richland, or excuse me, at Rice Creek Elementary. He's a, it's a certified demonstration magnet school, and the magnet is STEAM. Is it, am I saying that right? With an extra M. So two M. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, Math, and Medical. He has one son, that's a R2 graduate, and this is Mr. Gadsden, going to really make me feel old when I say your second son is in the 11th grade, because I met him when he was in the fifth grade, wearing unmatching socks, if I can say that, because we have this connection on that. But he's in the 11th grade at a Richland 2 high school. Mr. Gadsden?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So for the inspirational moment today, I love to share books with my faculty and staff as our theme for the year, and even though we have a different book this year, I wanted to share last year's theme, which is called Why Not You? As students, as well as adults, or I should say, big kids, we always have dreams and aspirations, and so the purpose of the book is why not you be able to do and be whoever it is that you want to be in life? So Why Not You? By Sierra and Russell Wilson. Knowing that it is football season. Is there something that you dream of, something that you'd be or do, something that will make you happy and make all your dreams come true? Maybe you cannot stop thinking about a job you could pursue, like an athlete, author, singer, or a captain of a crew. Do you find yourself dreaming of what you are meant to do? Or perhaps you worry whether your dreams are too big for you? Take a pause, a breath, a moment. Use your brilliance as your cue, and then think about this question, Why Not You? Why not you? Why not you? You're a winner. You're so strong. You are perfect and important. You and all your gifts belong. Why not you? Why not you? You're a star. You have no fear. You are such an inspiration. We are grateful that you are here. Ever heard, "The sky's the limit"? Well, that simply isn't true. Go beyond it. Keep on pushing. You can break that ceiling too. You are stronger than you realize, wiser, smarter, braver too. There is absolutely nothing that you can't try or reach or do. Life is filled with many lessons. Obstacles may block your view. Disappointing situations may make triumph hard for you. Don't you worry. Keep on trying. Soon, you will make your big debut. It will take determination, persevere, and you'll get through. What's your story? What's your mission? What will you become or do? Now's your time. The whole world's waiting. All our hearts are set on you. Why not you? Why not you? You are great. You have the stuff. You can drop your doubts and worries. You're perfection. You're enough. Why not you? Why not you? You're a hero. You're the best. Listen closely and believe it, then let go of all the rest. Hear these words and really listen. Every one of them is true. Look inside yourself. Look inside yourself and know it. You are magic through and through. There is truly no endeavor that's too hard or big to do. Your potential has no boundaries. You can do it. Why not you? Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gadsen. Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. We will now move on to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the consent agenda for September 12, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Ms. Porter? You know, we're spread out, and I can't hear good. I'm sorry, y'all.
Yes, sir.
I got you. I got you. All right, motion was made by Mrs. Agostini, seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Ms. Agostini, is that correct on the screen?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. Vote is si, uh, seven yes, zero no. The motion carries. We will now move on to public participation. Tonight, we have 21 individuals have signed up to address the board, and tonight, we're going to, uh, only have two minutes per person. You'll have two minutes to address the board in an effort to ensure everyone signed up has an opportunity to speak. In the first session, we will ask that you be mindful and respect the two-minute time limit. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you're, when you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear an audible tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Vice Chair Nash will assist me and serve as our time keeper.
Before we begin, I will remind our speakers that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation typically will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. So we'll go ahead and get started, and I don't want to have to buzz y'all, so follow the two minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I have a question before we proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
When did the time change from three minutes to two minutes?
Just a few minutes ago. We saw we had 21 people.
And who would make that decision?
The chair.
Uh, me and Dr. Moore made that decision.
Thank you.
Okay. First up, Melissa Gilbreth. Melissa Gilbreth. Moving right along, Max Berg.
Hello? Hello? Good evening, members of the public and the school board. My name is Max Berg, and I am a current high school junior enrolled at Spring Valley High School. I am here today because the change is made to the attendance policy for my high school and for high schools across the district. I would first like to begin by thanking Dr. Moore and the retro Richland 2 staff for what you've already done to attempt to clarify the attendance policy. However, I still have preliminary concerns, and I believe these are shared among my peers and among teachers across the district. What does have me concerned is that there are far too absences, far too few absences allowed, and this still encourages students to come to school sick despite has, what has been told to us by district staff. One issue I believe is the lack of direct communication about the nuances of how these special absences work. As my understanding is, is concerned, it is only allowed for me to have 10 absences in a year-long class, five in a semester block, and three in a semester skinny. I can hardly see why I myself would want to miss any school days when I am sick, and I believe this applies for most students as well. If I miss school due to illness or injury, I should be focusing on getting better and learning the content I miss, not what activities I will have to undergo to make up for this time. That is the inherent issue with the way that this policy has been implemented. It incentivizes attendance over learning and over health, which always should come first. Even if I am not sick, I have doctor's appointments, activities I'm involved in, and other extracurriculars that take up much of my time on the school days and on the weekends, which is what I believe this policy will attempt to encroach upon. I think the amount of concern students and parents here tonight to discuss anything related to this policy speaks to the public consensus. While I am, while I am thankful for efforts taken by the district to further clarify these absences, there is still much room to go, and the lack of direct and effective communication leaves most of us confused as to what exactly we are allowed to miss. Telling students and parents you don't want them coming to school sick is not going to change anyone's mind when missing school means so much. I have eight classes, nine classes a day, clubs, instruments, and college applications on the horizon. I don't feel like I'm adequately prepared to miss school days, even when it's out of my control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Burnett Gallman.
Good evening. As a physician who has done some mental health work, I take the whole idea of taking our children out of school, uh, very seriously. And as a former teacher, I also do the same, because there's no good reason to take children out of school and sacrifice much-needed instruction. This board actually had four areas of concentration early on. This measure of taking children out of school jeopardizes all four. It will actually potentially undermine and hinder safety and security. Because so many teachers are against this, it will hinder recruitment and retention. Uh, religion's instruction has absolutely nothing to do with academic achievement. There's no curriculum available, and we don't know if this, uh, curriculum actually will be vetted by the South Carolina Board of Education. And in terms of mental health, we've seen, uh, attempts to bully the board, so I don't doubt that there will be much more bullying. It was emphasized that this would be a volunteer program. One of the things that has happened, uh, in the past is Christian religion and other faiths have traditionally done their teaching in church, mosque, synagogue, temple, and an after-school program, so that if this is truly a volunteer program, let's do a volunteer after-school program. Instead of sacrificing our children's much-needed, uh, test scores, as I'm sure you're well aware, I think that this is, uh, very, very sacrificial, and I won't get into intent versus content, because I have some handouts to deal with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, next, we have Joyce Brooks. Joyce Brooks. Okay. Diane Sumter.
Distinguished members of the Richland School District 2 board, I'm Diane Sumter, a local resident, businesswoman, and longtime supporter of the schools within the district and the children placed in your care to receive a high-quality academic experience. I am concerned about the proposed school release initiative for religious instruction and urge you to vote against incorporating this program into the operation of our public school. I would never tempt to dissuade any evangelist from promoting the virtues of Christianity. However, the board would be ill-advised to support and adopt a program that will materially undermine the district's performance and student achievement standards. There is a universal, well-documented correlation between seat time and academic performance. Your own internal indicators pinpoint current deficiencies in your students' seat time and academic achievement for the district. As steward of the public interest, it would be unwise to initiate a school release program that conflict with your prime objective. Moreover, as others have cited, the school release proposal introduced increased exposure to the district as it relates to student transit, site selection, curricular approval, and further accommodation to remedy seat time shortage. My fellow citizens, I want you to succeed in enhancing student performance, meet state standards, so that our children have the confidence and academic grounding to compete for the careers of the future and provide leadership that values students, teachers, and parents. It could be that the sponsors of the school release program view our student population as a readily available source of.
Thank you, Ms. Sumter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Time's, time's up, unfortunately. Thank you.
I'm really giving up my one minute, though.
Ms. Regina Corley. Ms. Regina Corley. Regina Corley. Okay. Uh, Mike Williamson.
Thank you, honorable board members, for allowing me to share my thoughts with you about release time. First, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Mike Williamson. My wife, Vicki, and I have three, uh, Richland 2 graduates that had great experience in the environment provided by this board. We both thank you, and not just because they're finally out of the house. In addition, it is useful to say that I am a follower of the Lord Jesus, and that I am convinced that truth is found in the book of the Bible. However, I know that this board has a responsibility to provide the very best education to all the students of Richland 2 School District, many of whom do not look, think, or believe like me. It is no small task you have undertaken, and I am genuinely grateful for your diligence and perseverance in doing your very best. Thank you. So what is your guide, your north star, as you make decision after decision? What helps you decide between good ideas and great ones as resources are scarce and the responsibility is heavy? The answer has come from each one of you, embracing diversity. I've heard the theme of diversity and embracing its power from your microphones many times, and I for one agree completely. But Mike, what does diversity, release time have to do with each other, you say? When we talk about diversity, we are not just talking about, about us being different people, but we are talking, that's the easy part. What we are talking about is energizing that diversity so that each student, parent, faculty member, and indeed resident of our community will stretch ourselves with ideas different than the ones that we had yesterday. To speak plainly, you have been advocating us to be respectfully listen to each other, evaluate the merit of ideas we've never heard before, ask questions of each other, and then embrace the great ideas from our neighbors, but also understand the ones we do not agree with, and we will grow as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Audrey Crawford.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Chair. Ms. Nash, would you repeat that name again, please?
Audrey Crawford.
Okay, thank you.
This one, that was the one you, okay, yeah.
That's me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and our new superintendent, Dr. Moore. My children attended Richland 2 schools, Richland 2 Charter School, private schools, and were homeschooled. I have a degree in education and have taught in public schools and private schools, homeschooled my children, and served on the Richland 2 Charter School Board. I own Blythewood Taekwondo, and so I'm very invested in the students of Richland 2, because my students are also my children, and I care about their well-being. Release time can offer so much to our students, but more than anything, release time was approved by the Supreme Court because it allows for parental choice in conjunction with opportunity for religious education, where parents see a need and have a desire for their student to participate. We aren't asking for mandatory cho, classes. We are asking for choice. I'd also like to thank the board member who brought up the case of Moss versus Spartanburg County School District, even though they brought it up, I think, as a negative to release time. The case is actually an informative read, and I encourage all board members to look it up and read it if you've not already done so. Spartanburg County Schools won their case in favor of the release time program. During the summary case of Zurich and Smith was brought up, and I found this quote interesting. "The court suggested that if public schools were not permitted to accommodate the religious desires of students and parents in this fashion, the result would be an unconstitutionally hostile environment toward religion." Going on to say, noting that the authorized and sometimes mandatory accommodation of religion is necessary, is a necessary aspect of the Establishment Clause jurisprudence, because without it, government would find itself effectively and unconstitutionally promoting the absence of religion over its practice. And finally, in its closing quotes, the Release Time Credit Act, which the South Carolina General Assembly enacted on its find, finding that the free exercise of religion is important to the intellectual, moral, civic, and ethical development of students.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Adele Little. Adele Little.
Do I press a button? No, okay.
It'll start soon as you start talking.
Okay. Chairman Trapp, board members, and Dr. Moore, my name is Adele Little. I serve as the Director of Development for School Ministries, and a big part of my job is communications, and I get to talk with our 70 programs across America. And the bottom line is lives are changed, and that their academics do rise, behavioral problems decrease, and mental health problems decease. They go down. To address the idea that a child missing an hour of elective class is more detrimental than beneficial, consider what the superintendent had to say. "I can honestly say," he said, "that the concept of using release time for religious classes has worked well for our community. Wall Street did not crumble in October 2008 due to lack of academic intelligence. Wall Street crumbled because of a lack of ethics and moral discernment. Certainly, there is value in spending time in addressing character development and topics which develop and nurture appropriate ethical responses." The other thing that has been heartbreaking is the opposition has tried to make this a political issue. Go verify this for yourselves. You will see that in states where release time laws have been passed, they are passed with a high percentage of bipartisan support. These legislators put a higher value on religious freedom of parents and students than traditional politics. At the local level, we have a diverse group of people in churches involved, a variety of races, a variety of church denominations, which would also represent different, different political opinions. We picture an ideal program, one that has a variety of people in churches working together, and we hope that will happen here. How do they unify when they disagree on certain points? They agree to teach things that they agree on and not things that divide. It would only benefit this district to allow it.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ken Brevic.
Well, you guys can guess what I'm talking, here to talk about. Um, I had notes, but I'm just going to talk from the heart. I've seen some of the best out of this board and some of areas of concern over the last few weeks. And what this is about is whether you all as a board decide that parents have the right to choose what they want for their students or not. Are we going to give them those opportunities, or are we not? Let them decide what they feel is in the best interest of their students. Now, the only meaningful argument I've heard over these times is the question, well, what about after-school and private school? about after-school and private school, some of which your own children have availed themselves of?" It's a really great question, but here's the answer: Who gets left out of that? Most parents who can't afford private school, and all of the kids that you transport from buses, they will never get. So if you guys vote no, or through some procedural thing, take it off the agenda and don't bring it on, you are sending a clear message to this community, and that is, you can have religious freedom in Richland Two, but only if you can afford it. Guys, I know you want to do better than that. This community needs you to do better than that. Thank you.
Next, we have Harvey Beach.
Mrs. Nash, would you announce the names after the claps, so I can hear, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Harvey Beach.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Beach. I'm a nurse by profession and also a health advocate. That's my main area of operation. This proposal for off-campus reinstructions may have good intentions. However, I'm concerned about unforeseen negative outcomes that may be later determined to be a reality. It may start out with a good idea, but it may end up being very detrimental to our kids. Secondly, today's pupils are already dealing with pressing issues in society such as navigating social media platforms, race discord, gender identification, and to add religious debate to the classroom will be counterproductive. Educators are tasked with the duty of teaching our students to require, to obtain the skills to be successful members of society. The mosque, church, synagogue, and temple should remain the place where our students meet their God. You know, we have many plows put about. I would ask that the community, parents, you stay woke, and stay woke and wake up.
Ellis Savitz.
Good evening, Chairman Trapp, Board members, and Dr. Moore. My name is Ellis Savitz, and I am a freshman at Spring Valley High School. I am here to talk to you about my concerns. I understand that you are bound by state laws and the State Department regulations. However, I have missed three days this year due to illness. The first was a stomach bug diagnosed by my physician, and the other two were due to heat exhaustion, where there was no air conditioning on the second floor at Spring Valley, though I appreciate that the administration and the district fixed that issue as of yesterday. I have diligently made up all my work in my classes and maintained high grades. While I understand that when students do not make up their work, then seat time may be needed to guide these students. However, I worked on my own time to complete the work. When I missed the first absence, we asked if we could go ahead and make up the seat time then, while the assignment still needed to be made up, so that I was not overwhelmed at the end of the semester by having seat time. We were told that seat time could not be made up until five absences were missed. Essentially, this policy portrays seat time as attention hours, which is a form of punishment, and students who miss school for reasons that cannot be avoided should not be punished. I understand that if a student misses school for COVID, then they can make up the work and they can be counted as virtually present. Why wouldn't it make sense to also extend this courtesy to excuse absences for medical, mental health, and religious reasons? I know that one of the things we are discussing tonight is religious release time. As a Jewish student, if I'm in a school for high holidays in which I sit in services, it would be unequal for me to have to make up seat time when students whose parents elect for them to receive religious education through release time are excused. Also, by having release time, students of any other religion will be singled out. By having this situation, you are encouraging exclusion of students with different religions. I assisted teach Sunday School after having prepared for my bat mitzvah for countless hours outside of school two years ago.
Thank you. Gretchen Scholl.
Good evening. Okay, awesome. Good evening. So my name is Gretchen Scholl, and I have two children in the system. They both are at Spring Valley, 11th and 9th, and they went through Windsor Elementary and Dent Middle School. And we moved here 10 years ago and chose Richland Two because, in comparison to Richland One or Lexington, for example, we perceived that it had such flexibility and creativity in taking care of all the different interests and needs of the students through its choice, expanded choice programs and magnet programs. And we've participated in those the entire time, beginning with Windsor's wonderful program. So I am here to ask that you apply that same creativity and flexibility to the attendance policy that's under question now. My daughter came home the other day all, you know, wide-eyed, sort of wild, like, "Mom, you wouldn't believe. This kid came to school. He had his wisdom teeth out. He was on anesthesia, and he still, you know, he refused to go home because he was worried about missing all his classes the second half of the school day." And so I see that as dangerous and also fear-based motivation. And so maybe a one-size-fits-all attendance policy is a bit too draconian. The other little story I can tell to exemplify why the flexibility is so valued to help teach my children and other children the value of their mental and physical health over just achieve, achieve, achieve would be my son's middle school experience, where some of his friends had lots of collaboration between the parents and the staff to give children who were having a little hard time in middle school a chance to have those days, those mental health days at home and make the work up in a creative fashion.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I want to make sure I didn't skip Sam Weiss. I feel like I called the name, but I want to make sure. Sam Weiss. Sam Weiss. Thank you. Thank you.
As just said, my name is Sam Weiss. I'm a student representative and advocate of Richland Northeast High School, and I'm here to give a firsthand about the release time issue. This year, I have had students tell me about how they have been ridiculed, bullied, abused, and threatened, simply because they are not Christian and some not the same denomination of Christian as the others. I'm a journalist, so excuse me for giving you a serious statistical report, but last meeting, Mrs. Washington, you yourself said, "I am the person who represents the interests of the entire district." So please tell me, do the thousands of students this would exclude and hurt count towards the district you represent that all of you represent? If given the choice between silent thousands of your own students and faculty or a few loud hundred, who will you represent? I introduced myself as a student advocate because that was the honor my principal described me as, and I will not back down if the voices are not being heard. Dr. Scott, in the last meeting, you had a lot of amazing, great points that I wish I had the time to elaborate on, but one that caught my ears when you said, "This village does not represent the 28,000-plus students we have," which I couldn't agree with more. Here, at these meetings, maybe a few hundred speak their minds, so for the other 27,000-plus, I say, "This will only cause trouble." Chairman Trapp, you said, "I believe in freedom," so I ask you, "Do I, as a student, have freedom of religion when I walk through the school doors? For years, I have had to beg, explain, and fight for my religious absences to be removed. But if a Christian does it, then it is not only okay but supported by the district? How does that make sense? It doesn't to me, and it doesn't to the Supreme Court. I would love to talk with y'all more, but I only have two minutes now, so thank you for your time, and I hope I'll have the chance to speak with at least one of you more in detail afterwards."
Thank you. Ellen Skidmore? Ellen Skidmore?
Yes, I stand to oppose release time religious education. I have given my life and my heart to religious education. Teaching Scripture is what I do and what I have done for over 33 years in this community as an ordained Presbyterian minister, for free, I might add. I agree with those who want you to approve release time education in a number of ways, however. I agree that there is much chaos in our culture. There are students who live in chaotic homes. There are folks whose parents either cannot or will not teach their children that they are loved and valued. I agree that character education is critical for the survival of our nation. Indeed, these values are already taught in schools as well as in churches, synagogues, and mosques. I agree that children need more adults beyond their families who believe in them, invest in them, give them what they need to succeed. We also know that the school is the safest, most predictable part of the day for children whose homes are chaotic. The most at-risk children get food, healthcare, physical, mental structure, encouragement during the school day from their teachers and staff. The school day is a safe haven for our most vulnerable children. If the proponents of release time are concerned about our most at-risk children, then their energies should be spent where there is the greatest need, before and after the school day, not during the most structured part of this children's day. If proponents of release time are less concerned about at-risk students but more concerned to evangelize children, then I say to you, "I fight to protect their right to teach the Christian faith, even when their version of the faith includes teaching that women are not able to be pastors or teach Scripture. They have the right to teach the faith as they see fit, and in fact, that's already happening."
Thank you. Fiona O'Connor? Fiona O'Connor?
Members of the Board, I come here today not as a caring parent or as a devout practitioner, but as a student of the Richland Two School District to speak here about religious release time. I am a junior at the Discovery Program at Spring Valley High School, and I am the one that will live with whatever policy is passed, and so I must weigh in on these policies that will affect my livelihood. It is my obligation to say that this policy that has been repeatedly and needlessly brought up over the past seven years is one built on fundamental hypocrisy, and I feel it does not hold any value in the field of education. It makes the assumption that release time is necessary for the spiritual and moral understanding of students, which implies that our current system is in some regard failing, that by not allowing precious school time to a daily Sunday School, we are allowing our students to lay lax in their principles. And to this I ask, are the many who have experienced their education in the normal way, by dedicating themselves to their studies during school and to their faith afterwards, not committed enough? Why are we acting like what is already in place is somehow not enough? We have no reason to believe that the devout do not have enough time to practice, and so what we are left with is a policy that takes time out of students' education. The new zero-tolerance policy for school attendance in Richland Two was made to combat the rampant absentcies, and I fail to see why there should be an exception. Students cannot be expected to make up the lost class time with no more than makeup work, and teachers should not be expected to have to deal with the increased workload that these policies will create by having one student turn in their work after all the others. I see, what I see is an attempt by the Church over my peers to weaken their values by taking time away from their school and towards the Church. I believe that the School Board will be giving exceptions to some students only because of their religion.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sally Bussey? Sally Bussey?
Hi, my name is Sally Bussey, and I want to tell you a story that is over 60 years old. It's hard for you to see this picture, but this is Uncle Joe and Aunt Jenny. This is a yellow school bus. Over 60 years ago, they would take children to a teen center, and at the teen center, they would, on Tuesday, one group would go, and on Wednesday, another group. And while they were there, they would sing songs like, "This little light of mine, let it shine, let it shine." "Hide it under a bushel, no, let it shine." And then after they would sing those songs, Uncle Joe would tell them stories about Noah and the ark, or about the big whale that swallowed Jonah, or maybe about Joseph's coat of many colors. As you've probably guessed, these were my parents, and when I would go downtown with them as a little child, children would run up to my parents, "Uncle Joe and Aunt Jenny," and they would hug them, and they would love on them. Why? Because they knew that Uncle Joe and Aunt Jenny would meet with them every week and sing songs and tell them stories. And they also knew it didn't matter what color they were, it didn't matter what their street address was, it didn't matter about their political views, because Uncle Joe and Aunt Jenny would love them. Please consider, other people, you all here, love our children here in Columbia, but we need Uncle Joe and an Aunt Jenny that would also love on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Case?
Hi. I'm glad to be with you again. And you know where I stand on the issue of release time. I'm not going to repeat what I've already said. I am going to say this, however. I'm going to just rip up all of the comments that I prepared that I wanted to say to you tonight and say, "The most articulate voices that I have heard this evening have been from the children, from these high school students who have articulated so powerfully and so beautifully and eloquently exactly where we are headed and where we need not to go." I want to just say one other thing, and then I'll be quiet, as hard as it is for a preacher to be quiet. If any decision is ever going to be rendered on this issue, if policy is ever going to be made that's going to define where we are going, of course, it's going to be done with the students in mind, it's going to be done considering where the parents are as well, but of paramount importance beyond all of that, data. We need data. Until we know where all of these families from Richland are from and what they believe and what they know and what they desire, all we're relying on are anecdotes, wonderful stories, some of which made me giggle and some of which made me want to cry. They're powerful stories, but it's only hyperbole. If any change is ever going to be made, the policy in this community needs to be done with evidence-based, that makes very clear what the community desires, not what a single person has remembered from their past or anything else. Even though they're powerful stories, what counts most is verifiable data. Thank you.
Sandy Boni?
Good evening. I've attended the last several Board meetings, and it's clear from comments made at these meetings that confusion exists regarding various aspects of release time. What is true? The policy is elective, non-denominational, non-discriminatory. Any student with parental permission would be allowed to attend, but if a parent does not give consent for the student to attend, that student would never be in a release time class. It is simply a policy allowing parents and students the option-- It is simply a policy allowing parents and students the opportunity to participate in a religious elective during the school day. To suggest that release time advocates don't care about at-risk students ignores the fact that at-risk students are highly likely to ride the bus and therefore not have the opportunity to exercise their religious freedom if RT is defeated. I believe from the prior meeting of the 28,000 students in this district, half of them ride the bus. Many of those who have spoken against release time have simply demonstrated their ignorance of the United States Constitution and of Supreme Court case law interpreting the First Amendment, as well as their lack of understanding of the mechanics of the program. It is not taking students out of school, it is teaching another elective. It is seat time, the Supreme Court has said so. Under the Constitution, missing school for any religious commitment is supposed to be covered, that's what the Supreme Court says. I am unaware of a policy at the school saying that if you miss for a religious event that you're counted absent, but the Supreme Court's already addressed that. There are 350,000 students who are attending release time programs annually. They're enjoying an option the students and families in Richland II should be able to choose as well, not just the ones who can afford to do something after school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Crystal Mason Cup?
Hello, Chairman Trapp and board members and Dr. Moore. Thank you for allowing me to come up. My name is Crystal Mason Cup. I'm a huge advocate in the county, and I really love volunteer work in helping people understand all the things that are available for them just to improve hope, because I think that is probably what's severely lacking right now is hope. I have a whole lot of things I was going to say, but many people have already said them, and I want to reiterate, it sounds a lot like there's a lot of misinformation about release time. It is not just for Christians or like specific Christians or one denomination. Anyone can opt in with their religion with this, so this is simply, it falls down to choice. And I heard a couple of different things about being bullied, about when it should be done after school. So many people already talked about, it is during school because people ride the bus. It is for those students to be able to opt in for it. If we're going to talk about bullying, we better all just stay home, because it doesn't matter where you come or come home, come from your home, you're going to have somebody that's going to bully about something. As a matter of fact, this program is proven to improve morale and to provide that hope that is so critical. So where do bullies come from? Very struggling personalities, people who are struggling emotionally, and they pour that bitterness out on others. And when they go to a religious program, it is proven that their hope improves. And so if they have that, they're going to what? Pour out peace and love and grace, and that is the hope of release time, to improve that. And then I had, there were comments about grades being so low they can't miss class. It is a parent choice. It is a parent choice, and because my time's running up, I'm not even going to say it because I feel like it'll mess it up, but anyways, just give it a chance and let a parent have a choice.
Thank you, Ms. Mason Cup. That concludes our public participation. Are there two Max Berks or only one because he's on here twice? And you can only have one moment to speak, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash, and thank all of you that participated tonight. We really appreciate it. The board will now vote on items discussed in the executive session. May I please have a motion regarding the contractual matter regarding the leasing and purchasing of properties?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Scott.
I move that we allow the superintendent or her designee to use the brokerage and the real estate services firm as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Dr. Scott and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Dr. Scott, is that motion correct on the screen?
Yes, that is correct.
Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the contractual matter regarding board legal services?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Agostini?
I move that the district's administration proceed to utilize exemption 710 of the district's procurement code to source attorney services for the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that you, Dr. Scott? Motion was made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, board members, please vote. Wait a minute. Mrs. Agostini, is that correct up there?
It is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the student appeal?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Nash?
I move that we uphold the administration's recommendation for student number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, is the motion on the screen correct?
That is correct.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Porter?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. There we are. I move that we approve student number one for the adult education program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion?
Are we doing these individually? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
I think there's only one student.
I'm sorry, students numbers one through eleven. There are eleven.
Okay. Mrs. Porter, would you like to restate the motion?
I move that we approve the student admission request into district's adult education program for students numbers one through eleven.
All right, do we have a second to that?
Second.
All right, motion is made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? All right, Mrs. Porter, is that correct on the screen?
Yes.
All right, board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, is that correct? Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. The next item of business would have been item 8.1, policy proposal for policy JHCB, release time for religious instruction, and that was removed from the agenda before the meeting, before we went into executive session. We will move on to item 9.1, new business, no action requested. The agenda item in this section is report on elementary and middle school achievement data. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will have Ms. Nancy Gregory, our Chief Academic Officer, and Ms. Jennifer Coleman, and Ms. Katina Davis present our data that has been released by the state for our elementary and middle schools.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Trapp, Board of Trustees, Dr. Moore. We are happy to be with you tonight to share the most recent assessment data. Before we begin, I would also like to recognize our elementary and middle school principals who are with us tonight, so thank you for being here. En masse, tonight, we're presenting the elementary and middle school achievement data from the previous year. Dr. Jennifer Coleman, Executive Director for Accountability, Research, and Evaluation, will begin our presentation by sharing the 2022-23 achievement data. She will be followed by Mr. Arthur Newton, Executive Director of Elementary Instruction, Ms. Penny Atkinson, Executive Director of Secondary Instruction, and Ms. Katina Davis, Chief Special Education Officer. They will share actions from their respective areas addressing the corresponding data. What you're going to hear tonight is a mixed bag, the positives and the challenges, areas for improvement. We are going to spend the majority of the presentation looking forward. While we are pleased with the district's ELA gains, we are squarely focused on improving math and science achievement. I will now turn it over to Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, good evening. We're going to jump right in and start just with a little bit of refresher for you all about SC Ready. By state law, we are required to give SC Ready in ELA and math to all students in grades three through eight. SC Ready science is only given in grades four and six. And you'll notice a note at the bottom, and one thing I always want to make sure folks understand is that we have to test every child in the building regardless of what their cognitive abilities or disabilities may be. For students that are unable to take SC Ready, they do take an alternative assessment on the same topics. This is our seventh year of SC Ready in South Carolina, and it is a South Carolina assessment that measures the South Carolina standards. And that's one thing that's real important to know is when we're talking about this, it's our state test, there are our state standards. However, both of these things are mandated by the state and federal law. South Carolina, interestingly enough, was one of the first states to develop an accountability system before No Child Left Behind even came about, and so we've lived in an era of having an accountability system pretty much as long as I've been doing this, which is a while now. Just as a reminder, there are four achievement levels on SC Ready, the highest being exceeds, the next being meets, approaches, and then does not meet. So one thing I want to say before we jump into the actual data is this presentation is just an 80,000 altitude view for you all. This is less than 1% of the data conversations that have already occurred, not only at district office, but more importantly, within our schools. The analysis of this data, when we look at it, you have to look at it from every single angle. You have to look at it by each of the four levels. You have to look at it by the two levels that the state considers being performative, which are the top two, which is meets and exceeds. You've got to look at it by strand, you've got to look at it by teacher, you've got to look at it by kid, and I can promise you that we have done every single one of those things, and we did that on July 18th, once we had the data analyzed to do so. So we've talked in the past before that there are different philosophies about how you do this 80,000 altitude presentation, and there are some who will just present meets and exceeds, and if you'll remember our press release, that's what we focused on when we put it out to the media, and we feel that that's fair because that is the state standard for what the state considers having achieved proficiency at each grade level. However, we do things a little bit different in our presentation in that we also do the approaches category, and there's two reasons for that. One, in the state of South Carolina, you can be in the approaches level and be well above the 50th percentile. Now, that's a little different, and this is kind of an eschewed thought that a lot of people don't get about South Carolina. South Carolina is actually known in the field of education for having some of the most rigorous standards nationally, as well as one of the most difficult assessments. So that's one reason we want to make sure that we're looking at approaches and above. But here's the second, and honestly, as a parent, here's the second and the most important reason. If we solely focus on meets and exceeds, which has been a goal in this district in the past, we are starting to see this phenomena, especially post-COVID, where you can have schools that increase the percent of students in meets and exceeds. Lots of green on that report, and we're very happy about that, but simultaneously, they're increasing the students in does not meets. So if you think about those four levels, right, and approaches is actually your largest scale score spread, those kids can do one of two things. They can either go into meets and exceeds, and that's our hope, that's every piece of work that we do is that they go into meets and exceeds. But the other thing that can happen is those kids in approaches can go to does not meets. So when we look at our data, we, again, this is one of many different ways that we've looked at the data, but I wanted to talk about that. So let's jump right into ELA. For those of you who have not seen this presentation before, there are a whole lot of numbers on the screen, okay? So it's really important when we're looking at our data that we look at a historical snapshot, especially now more than ever post-COVID. You need to look at at least a five-year span of scores if you're trying to establish any type of trends that you're seeing in your data. So here's the good news. Let me point out one other thing. You're going to notice in 2020, you see CB in all of those columns. That's when the state was shut down, there was no state testing anywhere in the state of South Carolina. You're going to notice there's an asterisk on 2021. That was another odd year where kids had the option of whether or not to take the state assessment. If they were virtual learners, they did not have to come in, if their parents were uncomfortable. And as we've talked about in previous board presentations, we had a very depressed sample size in 2021 with only less than about 50% of our students actually taking the state assessment. So that's why it's really important to build this big and wide picture when we're looking at data historically. So here's the good news. We talked last year about rebound versus recovery, and rebound being that we are making gains from the drops that COVID, all districts have seen. Recovery is that you have made it back to where you were pre-COVID, and the good news is in Richland II, when we look at all of our grade levels on ELA, we have not only rebounded, but we have recovered and then some. In particular, I think it's important to point out fourth and fifth grade, where we are now almost 7% higher than we were with students in the approaches and above category than we were. than we were pre-pandemic. This is a big deal. And this is a direct correlation to the work that we've put into reading as a state, as a district, our teachers, our interventionists, and our coaches, and we are incredibly pleased to see this. Now, if I were you guys, I'd be like, okay, Jen, that sounds really great. But what about that one red block that I see up there in third grade when we look at a five-year? So third grade has made gains from the previous school year. But when we look at it compared to five years ago, we're actually down about 3%. Now, we've talked before about the bubbles, okay? There were three bubbles that we saw in Richland, too, first, and then we started to see as a state and a national trend for COVID impact. So think about your three bubbles again. If you were a child who happened to be in daycare, preschool, or kindergarten when the pandemic started, the trend that we're seeing, and those kids are now third graders, we're seeing trends in deficits in reading, and we're seeing lower attendance post-COVID, right? And that was what that red block was. When you look at that five-year change from grade three, we are watching our itty-bitties very keenly because we know especially through some of our formative assessments that this current third grade could be the one that we've got to watch closely. If you were a kid in the middle bubble, if you were in first through eighth grade when the pandemic started, we noticed from the data nationally, state, locally, that math was impacted the most greatly, as well as attendance post-COVID. And if you were in high school when the pandemic began, we noticed that we had an increase in dropouts, a decrease in graduation, and a massive uptick in chronic absenteeism. Okay, so why did I want to revisit the bubbles? Because here's something we need to keep in mind, especially you all as elected officials. At the end of the last legislative session, a bill was put forth to expand Read to Succeed. And they wanted to expand it. Currently, you can be retained in third grade in our state if you score not met one. So think about that lowest category, they slice it in half. If you're in the bottom, you can be retained in third grade. The bill that was proposed was to expand that to all of not met one and also to have some expansion into grades K, one, and two. Now, why is this slide in here? We've never talked about legislative policy in the middle of an assessment presentation. This bill will come back up again, and it's going to be very critical that we're vocal about it for multiple reasons. The biggest one that I'm going to talk about, so that I don't get buzzed for being up here too long, is John Hattie. John Hattie is actually one of the world leaders in educational research. I carry this around with me, it's a little nerdy, I know, but John Hattie studies effect sizes. And he does something called meta-analysis. And that's just a fancy word to say that he looks at lots of studies on one topic and then tells us, how effective is this as a strategy? Well, what's important for you to know is that actually retaining students has a negative effect score. What that means is it actually hurts kids when you retain them a grade level because they lack knowledge, right? So we want to make sure that we really understand and we're watching these legislative changes. I'm willing to bet that this will come back up in this session. Okay, so math. Ms. Gregory alluded to in the opening that math was definitely not what we wanted to see and that we're struggling. We were kind of chomping at the bit, waiting for state scores to come out, and I certainly don't want to come across as though we're pleased to see that this is a trend statewide, but it definitely was. And Superintendent Weaver herself in her press release addressed the need for us to have a more focused on math. We've done this with reading, and I think we see the fruits of that labor in that first slide. The emphasis on reading, coaches, the emphasis on this, you know, we did all of that. A lot of times when that starts to happen, it's to the detriment of another. In addition to, if you remember that middle bubble, those are the kids that we're seeing on the screen now. We know that COVID, and learning loss during COVID, impacted this group of kids the most with math. And we're definitely seeing that. We are not seeing the rebound, except in fifth grade, excuse me. And we certainly aren't seeing the recovery. As a matter of fact, we're significantly lower than we were pre-pandemic with math. So why does it look this way? Well, we definitely have what is really kind of a perfect storm in education right now. We already know that we are going to have to talk about it, even though everybody is tired of talking about COVID. But the research is incredibly clear that it will take at least seven years for students to fully recover from the academic losses experienced during this time. We also have two additional confounding variables that are creating that perfect storm. One, let's talk about what the definition of chronic absenteeism is, and what it is not. Chronic absenteeism is a state definition that if a student misses 10% of their instructional days, they are considered to be chronically absent. So quick math test. We have 180 days on our calendar. How many days do you have to miss before you're chronically absent? 18 days, all right. So we're not talking about an absence here and absence there. We're talking about a significant amount of instruction being lost when a student is chronically absent. Chronic absenteeism across the nation has doubled since the pandemic. And it's an issue that all states and all districts are fighting. We wanted to give you guys some context of what we're talking about. When I started this job 23 years ago, you never saw an elementary school with double-digit percentages of students who are chronically absent. It is the norm now. So you can see for our elementary schools in Richland, too, the range of chronic absenteeism, our lowest is 5.5%, and our highest school has 32.2%. So think about that, because several of you were in the classroom at that level. You've got a third of the kids in your classroom who are missing more than 18 days of instruction. The impact that that has on our ability to ensure that kids are moving forward. Now, when we go to the middle school, it's higher, that's always been the case. But we're starting to see what used to be the typical range for high school, we're now seeing at the middle school level. So for Richland, two middle schools, our lowest chronic absenteeism rate is 14.5%. So that means that in our school, that our middle school that has the lowest chronic absenteeism, 14.5% of their kids miss more than 10% of their instructional time. And our highest is at 23.1. Child, remember those when we do the next presentation about high school, and you see how high the chronic absenteeism rates are there because they're astonishing at this point. In addition, another confounding variable that we have are teacher shortages. And especially for us in critical subject areas such as math, science, and special education. So when we start talking about kids needing these seven magical years to recover from COVID, how do we do that? If retention has a negative effect size, what does work? Well, we know what works, and it's interventions, and it's structured and strong interventions. Now, another challenge that we're having to face is we are very blessed in this district to have interventionists. The problem that we started to face is as the teacher shortage has gotten more critical, those interventionists are not there to do intervention work anymore. They're having to go into the classroom, which is the right decision because we'd rather a student have a certified educator than have nobody. But it does then limit one of those tools in our toolboxes to attempt to rebound and recover from COVID. All right, so the last thing that we'll cover for my portion of the presentation is science. You'll notice it's referred to, technically, the state has gone to calling it SC Ready Science, but they're still calling it SC Pass on some press releases. So I didn't want to be super confusing, but it's all in one. When we look at our science scores, and remember, we only test in two grades, in fourth and sixth grade. Federal law says you have to test once in elementary for science, once in middle school. You can see with fourth grade that we had a two-year change of a negative 3.1. We also saw that drop in sixth grade. And you can see that we have not had the recovery. We're lower than we were pre-pandemic for science as well. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Newton and Mrs. Atkinson.
And while they are coming, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Coleman, for that presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Trapp, other distinguished members of the board, and Dr. Moore. Obviously, we've had a quick response as soon as we saw this data. One of the things that we're doing and that we truly believe in is AT&amp;T, alignment, teaching, and time. We have to ensure that our curriculum are aligned to our standards, that we're explicitly teaching our students, and that we're spending the appropriate amount of time. When you think about math and you think about science, and right now, math specifically, students must be taught concrete first, representational, and then abstract. And when we were virtual, and when we returned, and COVID was still around, those things were not possible because of the spread of disease. Now that we move away from that, we're making sure that we're getting back to those best practices. One other thing that we're doing, we're conducting schedule audits. We're making sure that we are having the appropriate amount of time in the schedule for all of our teachers, making sure that the dedicated amount of time is available for every single subject. That is critically important, as I referenced earlier, the time that we need to put into teaching our content areas. We're also contacting our principals and making sure that they are aware of any adjustments that need to be made to our teacher schedules. And we're following up as a team with classroom observations and with feedback to our teachers to make sure that we're maximizing the amount of time that we have in a day. We have committed to 75 minutes of daily math instruction so that the balanced math model can be taught with fidelity, such as fluency in daily spiral review, problem of the day, concept development, student closure and debriefing. Sometimes, at the elementary level, those things can be lost. So we're making sure that we're getting back to the best practices, make sure that those things are done. They are essential components of an effective math lesson. As mentioned earlier, John Hattie, which is a great researcher, he said that .4 is the average growth that you can expect in one school year. Well, collaborative planning is 1.57, which is almost four years of growth. We want to make sure that our teachers are truly collaborating and not just really planning. And what I mean by that is, if you're planning, I may say, hey, teacher A, you do the ELA plans. Teacher B, you do the science plan, and we just pass them around. But true collaboration is when they're sitting down together and they're unpacking standards, and they're creating lessons, and they're creating assessments that are aligned to the intent of the standards. How does that help anyone? Well, with teacher turnover, the new teachers that we have, I remember myself, for example, being a young teacher. You learn so much from veteran teachers, you learn so much from master teachers. So we want to make sure that those practices are still in place for all of our teachers. Excuse me. Our team will go in, as we always do, we will continue to model lessons, co-teach with teachers, and provide highly effective strategies for teachers to utilize throughout their lessons. We will certainly make sure that we demonstrate how to appropriately use manipulatives. As I mentioned, the concrete, representational, and abstract, because it just doesn't start at third grade where we're tested. We do truly understand that it begins in 4K, and sometimes at home. We want to make sure that all of our teachers are on the same page when it comes to that, as well as small groups. Anytime you have a class of students, you're going to have some differences. And you're going to have students with different needs, and you can't just teach everyone the same way. So we want to make sure that we're using data for small groups, that our teachers are having, excuse me, the math workshop model to make sure that that is happening. And this is how you truly close those achievement gaps. And speaking of achievement gaps and gaps period, we can't treat all of our teachers the same either. Our teachers are at different levels. We are at different levels, and we need different kinds of professional development. So we want to make sure that we're providing our teachers feedback that's customized for them, to make sure that they're getting the follow-up and the support that they need to develop and become better teachers. And the science of teaching reading certainly won't be lost. It is still a major focus of our literacy instruction. Orton-Gillingham training is continuing, we provided that this summer for our teachers. And right now, our reading coaches are participating in Language Essentials for Teachers in Reading and Spelling, Train Letters. I'm sure many of you have heard of that, which teaches the how, the what, and the why of literacy acquisition to improve instructional practice and impact long-term systemic change in literacy instruction. We will, you know, support all of our teachers. Again, like I mentioned earlier, due to the number of new teachers that we have, it is really, really important that we provide additional and targeted professional development in support our teachers to ensure that evidence-based practices are being utilized on a consistent basis. And in science, you know, like I said with math, you know, the hands-on. We're going to make sure, number one, that the instructional time is there for science. And number two, we want to make sure that our students are getting engaging experiences, hands-on experiences, to help them fully understand the concepts. And most recently, we purchased teacher guides and student investigation notebooks for all of our students because unfortunately, the state did not provide enough funding for our new science curriculum when they did that. And so we want to make sure that our teachers have tangible items in their hands to help guide their lessons throughout the day and where they can assess their students accordingly. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Atkinson.
Chairman Trapp, members of the board, and Dr. Moore, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight with our academic plan for middle school. If I think back to about January, I believe one of you asked me, Ms. Atkinson, do we need more time for math instruction? Is there any way that we can double the amount of math instruction that our students get? And my answer is yes, we can do that. But to double the amount of math instruction, we have to double the amount of teachers that we have for math. And you have already heard Dr. Coleman talk about the critical shortages that we have in the areas of math, science, and special ed. So once we got this data back this summer, we realized very quickly that those critical shortages had made a major impact on our achievement data. And since the middle of July, as Dr. Coleman has already explained, the academics department, along with principals, along with teachers, have huddled together to come up with, how are we going to respond to the data that we have upon us? So you see before you, we are going to maximize math instructional time during the school day. Remember, in middle school, every sixty, every 50 to 60 minutes, children change classes. So it's not like in an elementary school where they're with one or two teachers all day long. We are looking with our ESSR funds, we have written an amendment to see if we can get retired teachers to come back and work with our students who are struggling during the day. So that plan is getting ready to take off. We want to implement additional foundational math support during the school days for students who are struggling based on the data. Again, we are looking at perhaps encouraging some retired teachers to come back and give us an hour of their day and work with students that the data tells us back during COVID, they missed foundational mathematical skills. Because we still have to teach sixth-grade standards to sixth graders, and we still have to teach seventh and eighth-grade standards to seventh and eighth graders. We can't go back in that 60 minutes and teach what they've missed. So we've got to become creative within the middle school day and with the time that we have and reach out to some of our veteran teachers, master teachers, and see if they will come back and assist us with that. Also, we have decided to provide, again, instructional consistency. You have just heard Mr. Newman talk about collaborative planning. Our middle schools are blessed in that they have two common plannings where they can sit down together and collaborate. So we are going to be very intentional about trying to protect one of those planning periods so they can truly huddle together, look at data, look at best strategies, work with our content specialists, so we can support them with what they need. Because remember, we have a variety of teachers in our building. We have the traditional first-year teacher. We have the traditional first-year international teacher. We have experienced international teachers. And then, of course, we have our master teachers that have been with us for a number of years. So providing them with support during that collaborative planning time. Also, continuing to model best strategies for them, co-teaching with them, teaching a model lesson so a first-year teacher can observe a master teacher or a content specialist teach, but then having that all-important coaching conversation after that model lesson has been delivered. Why did I do what I did? What did you see me do? Why do you think I made that instructional decision? And also, as Mr. Newton talked about, having focused classroom observations specifically around math. We have a district walkthrough that is phenomenal, that other districts always want to copy. But we're going to go into the math classroom and look with a shorter lens to make sure that we are meeting the needs mathematically of- that we are meeting the needs mathematically of our students and helping our teachers as well. I shared with you last year that we were in our second cohort of theory to practice, unleashing students' mathematical potential. This year, I can stand before you and tell you now, we are in our third cohort. So we have had about 60 teachers now either finished this particular class or in the midst of it, and it is led by our secondary math specialist, Ms. Melinda Lee. So let's talk about science. In 2021, the state released new science standards. But the 2223 school year, we tested the old standards. So our sixth-grade teachers had new standards in front of them that were not going to be assessed last year, and then they had the old standards that they needed to teach because that's what they were going to be assessed on. So what we asked our sixth-grade teachers to do last year, and we worked on this the year before because we knew the bridge year was coming, is we asked our sixth-grade teachers with our content specialists, what is in common with the outgoing standards and the incoming standards? Where there is a commonality, we can teach the outgoing and the incoming. If there are no commonalities, we need to stay with the outgoing standards because that is what we're going to be assessed on last year. So now, in 2023, 24, we are all teaching our new 2021 standards because that is what we will be assessed on this fall in sixth grade. And I'm sure you have read that the State Department has asked for a waiver, that we will give the assessment, but they are asking the federal government to waive the results so they will not count against us because the limited number of items that the state has to assess the new sixth-grade standards. When I was in school, I always learned best when someone told me a story. And Dr. Coleman and Mr. Newton have told you some stories on our journey this past year. But let me share with you that one of our middle schools in sixth grade last year had one science teacher. So that means that 75% of the students at that middle school did not have a high-quality science teacher. So when we look at the data and we realize that perhaps a band teacher had to go cover that sixth-grade science class for a period, a seventh-grade science teacher may have had to go cover that same sixth-grade science class for a second period, we believe that made a direct impact on the scores that we have presented to you tonight. We know that a high-quality teacher in every classroom is what our students deserve and it's what we want for them. And we are here to provide the support for our teachers so that our scores will rebound and be completely recovered. And at this time, I'll pass it over to Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Moore. In addition to what we are already doing for all of our students, we have another lay of students, our students with disabilities. And our plan for them is to create an environment where they are pushed into instead of pulled out of their general education classes. So they're getting instruction from the teacher that has the content knowledge. For example, I'm a former math teacher. I would have my students with disabilities in the classroom with me, along with a teacher that is certified in special education, and we would collaborate together on the lessons, on doing small groups within the classroom, on modifying or not modifying, but adjusting the lesson so that the students with disabilities can access the general curriculum. So we're excited. This year, we are working with a firm, they will come in over the next 12 months, they're going to do a phased approach. This week, we're going to train our administrators on what is co-teaching, how to implement it within their schools, how to schedule. And then in October, during our fall in-service, the consultants will come back and they will work with a group of teachers, general ed, special ed, an administrator, and a person that schedules at the schools, and they will come in and work with them on what does co-teaching look like in the classroom and in the building. And then the group will come back in January and they'll work with our administrators, schedulers, school counselors, on how to schedule the building, which students to place within which classrooms and how many. And so we're excited about the work that we'll be doing over the next few months. I know that I would have loved the opportunity to do that when I taught algebra and geometry to my students. So that's step one for us. Then we're also going to bring in some consultants to work with the teachers that work with our students that have more significant cognitive disabilities. As Dr. Coleman shared with you, all students take our state assessments. They may take an alternative assessment, but they are assessed. And some of you have visited our classrooms where our students may be medically fragile. Those students take assessments. Our students that are nonverbal, our students that have behavior disorders, all of them take assessments. And so we're going to bring in consultants to work with their teachers to make sure that the curriculum that we're using with those students, that they're using it effectively and with fidelity. We're also making sure that our resource teachers, because we do know that we will have some students that will need to be pulled out, they may not be appropriate for the co-teaching model that we're implementing, we're making sure that the resource teachers have access to all of the curriculum that our general ed teachers have access to. And you've heard it, open court, big idea, HMH, whatever they're using in the general ed classroom, our special ed teachers will have access to those same materials. And then finally, we're going to pull together a multidisciplinary team to look at how we're doing special education here in Richland, too. We've had the model that we're currently under, I think, at least since I know I've been in this position, 11 years. So it's time to look at our program structure, look at the students, where the classrooms are located, how we're modeled. We're going to look across the country and see, is there a different way that we can serve our students with disabilities, to make sure we're doing whatever is cutting-edge, new. And we know in Richland, too, we are future-ready, so we want to make sure we pull together some future-ready ideas for our students. And I also wanted to share that you heard Mr. Newton talk about Orton-Gillingham, and that is the gold standard for intervention as far as working with reading, and we're also going to introduce touch math to our students, so we're bringing in that curriculum. I wanted to share something with math-related, since we're focused on math with you, to use with our students with disabilities. And so we are all purpose-driven, future-ready, and ready to do the work necessary. Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Hi, we shared a lot of information with you tonight. And as we wrap up tonight's presentation, we would like you to know, we are also researching different models of support for our high-need schools, exploring targeted recruitment and retention strategies for high-needs areas, as we've talked to you about math, science, and sped. In addition, the district is in the process of reviewing our salary schedule and salary structures throughout the district to ensure we are competitive with other districts, not just locally, but in the state. This concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gregory, and your team. So, Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to you, I do want to recognize that we have our principals here, so I'm going to ask our principals to stand up, please, because they're the ones that are in the trenches and doing the work every single day with their faculty and staff. So I just want to say thank you to them. As I was going out doing my school visits, I visited several of the campuses during pre-planning, and I can tell you, they were looking at data, they were having those deep conversations, and not one principal that I spoke to was satisfied with the results that they had seen and were looking to have improvement. So they are doing the work that we need to do. So first and foremost, thank you to our principals. I do want to just emphasize a few points before we open it up to the board. Each of our presenters tonight talked about the data meetings and the process of analyzing the work. Let me assure you that we at the district office has had multiple three-to-four-hour data meetings. We've had at least, I believe, Dr. Coleman, what, three already, and we have several more scheduled as we're going to dig into our high school data. Why is that so important? It's important that you understand it's not just the teaching and learning that you see standing in front of you. This is a district-wide plan. And my expectation, as the district has heard and as our leaders have heard, is that we all own this data. So every department in this school district is working in support of this plan, to include the partnership, the strong partnership that is taking place between teaching and learning and our principal supervisors. We are all doing this work together because we are all here to serve students. So I want to thank our principal supervisors, Ms. Footman and Ms. Suber, for their hard work, but also, I want to let you know that we are addressing the gaps that we see here. I had the opportunity this week to, or this past week, to attend the superintendent symposium for the state, talked to many of my colleagues about the data, and I even spoke with our state superintendent about the math data. This is a national issue, it's a state issue, but as I've told our faculty and staff, our district personnel, as a scientist, math and science is very dear to my heart, and we will be making improvements in that area because we need to make sure that our students are ready to compete in a global economy. So at this point, we will turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Moore and Mrs. Gregory. Board members, are there any questions for Mrs. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Scott.
I have a few questions, but before I go to my questions, I do want to say to Dr. Suber, Mrs. Footman, and the wonderful principals that's here, thank you so much. We really appreciate all of the hard work that you're doing and you've put into it and look forward to visiting some of your schools if I have not been there. But I want to let you know, I can't speak for the board, but you have my support 110%. So I just want you to know, thank you for the hard work that you're doing with the students there, thank you for being positive role models and leaders, and I look forward to the great work and the increase in student academic achievement that you guys are going to produce from your school. Now, to my questions, I wanted to go back. Dr. Coleman, you mentioned something about the virtual learners were not tested. If you don't have it with you today, is there any way you can get back with us per grade level, how many students that were not tested per grade level?
So I don't have it by grade level. It was about 42% district-wide that did not come in and test, but I can get it for you by grade level.
Right. No hurry, but when you get a chance.
Yes, for 2021.
Absolutely. Mr. Newton, I have a question. I know we were talking about 30 minutes of daily science. I know back in the day, science was not taught every day, you know, depending on the grade level, it may have been taught on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or now Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Did I hear you clearly that now science would be taught every single day?
Yes, that is the expectation. We found when it's broken up that way, there's no continuity, and the kids sometimes lose what they've learned because there's no continuation of the concept in which they were learning consecutively throughout the week.
Okay. Now, how would that interfere with middle school math? Because you guys mentioned earlier that middle school math now needs 75 minutes. So how would we do the science every single day? Because we know that sixth grade do take the tests for, which test is that? I forget. The fourth and, which one is it? Yes, I know fourth and sixth, but what's called?
SC Pass.
Okay, SC Pass, that's right, because I was thinking SC Ready, but that's not.
SC Ready, now they changed the name.
Right, to SC Pass. So how would that work? What would that look like in a middle school? And then my second question to the middle school piece is, with the schedule that I've seen with middle school, and also had an opportunity to visit several of our middle schools, my question is, are we going to change the class schedule for the 75 minutes or math? How would that work? What would it look like?
Dr. Scott, the 75 minutes was the commitment from the elementary.
For the elementary?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Typically, it was 60 minutes, but we found 75 minutes served us best because then we can teach the balanced math model like it's supposed to.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, because I'm thinking, how are we going to do that? So thank you for that clarity. Right.
Yes.
But science is also the middle school, was my question about that, but I think you guys have answered that. Those are all the questions that I have. Thank you so much.
Are there any other board members with questions? Ms. Augustine.
Mr. Chair, and thank you all for the presentations. My question is on the elementary school, so if we're increasing science every day and math for 75 minutes, what are we giving up?
We're not giving up much at all, anything at all. We are maximizing. The schedule audits that we have, we're making sure that we find the minutes that we can put toward the content. For example, we shortened the morning meetings, we shortened some of the transitions between classes. Give them adequate time, we also shorten, you know, the bathroom breaks. We want to make sure that those are consistent practices across the school and across the district. We provided sample schedules throughout the summer so that our principals can work with our teachers to make sure that that happens.
Okay. And how are the teachers involved in helping work or develop these action plans for change?
I'm glad you asked that question. We created an ad hoc math committee a few weeks ago. We had a teacher on our committee, we had district-level folks as well, principal reps. And so we came together for about three hours and we hashed out some non-negotiables, and we also presented that to the principals, and we've had conversations with the principals, and we've done a presentation, we've done some data dives. So it's been a collective and a collaborative effort to make sure that all of this is being done consistently across the system.
But more than one teacher?
For elementary, we had one third-grade teacher because she represented the early childhood as well as the upper elementary. And principals also took it back to their schools.
So we only have one teacher on the committee to help work with this?
Yes, our idea was, we didn't want to take too many teachers out of the classroom, but we had one teacher represented.
Okay. And then, Mrs. Atkinson, you had touched on this, but the ESSR funds, that was something that I thought of. I knew in the past that what we've done is, we've had one day where the kids stay after school with the ESSR funds.
Extended day is what we have offered the past two years.
Can we consider doing it more for the math?
We are looking to do something a little different with extended day, because what we have is, we'll have 700 children sign up, and then we have half of those that actually participate. So by maximizing the school day, all of our students will be there and should be able to benefit. We are looking at perhaps, instead of doing something after school, doing something before school because our buses arrive early, parents are arriving early, waiting in the car line, so we're looking at offering perhaps an early bird and/or an extended day based on what each school can offer with what teachers are willing to do with our students at the middle level. And that is, yes, that is based on feedback from a survey we did at the end of our extended day last year with the teachers that participated and with working with our principals and talking to them.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, board members?
Mr. Trapp?
Ms. Porter.
Yes, I have a few questions. For third grade, just for my point of knowledge, Read to Succeed, was that exempt during the pandemic?
Yes, during the pandemic, it was.
Okay. And then what resources are provided for our response to intervention folks in math? And is that something that all principals have funds for?
Dr. Suber, who was in charge of that, provided them with Focus Math, which was curriculum for that.
Okay. Say that again?
Focus Math.
Focus Math, okay. And is that only elementary, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when was the math textbooks that we currently use? I believe that's Engage New York, or are we using that?
No, Big Ideas is what was adopted, 2020.
Okay. And then when was that last adoption?
It was spring of 2020 is when it was.
Okay. Okay, and that's Big Ideas. All right. And then, by chance, is there any correlation between our STEAM schools with math? And did we look at any of that? I'm just curious to know if they perform better in math?
Not what we saw. It varies, it depends on the teacher.
Okay. And the theory to practice, unleashing students' mathematical potential, the third cohort, what grade levels does that cover?
That is our middle school and high school math teachers. When we offered our first cohort, we focused on Algebra I teachers, which would have been eighth grade and ninth and 10th grade teachers, but after the first cohort, we have opened it up to all middle and all high school teachers.
But after the first cohort, we have opened it up to all middle and all high school teachers.
Okay. And then your co-teaching model, what levels is that for?
I'm sorry, would you ask me that again?
The co-teaching model that we're bringing in, what grade levels is that for?
With specially, and I'll let Ms. Davis answer that question.
We're actually going to open that up to all grade levels.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It's my favorite of the year.
Any other questions, Ms. Washington?
Thank you. So I heard the mention of the ESSR funds, which was one of the questions that I had. Being that ESSR is going to run out, are we going to use that, some of that funding to bring in additional support? I heard you talk about veteran teachers and master teachers to help with interventionist. But will we be prepared as a district to carry that on in the following years?
That is a good question. This is the first year we have done that. We've used ESSR funds, as you know, for SOAR Extended Learning Day. But again, there was a quandary with middle school and what is the best thing to do to maximize instructional time? And that's why we chose to look at elective time where we could use it. And as we progress through the year, we will look at this and we may be coming to you with a budget proposal, looking at the data and the feedback from that. But again, that was the best way we could figure to maximize the time. And again, so that no student is left behind, that it's offered available to students that need it during the school day versus trying to get students to stay after school. And as Ms. Atkinson also shared, we are doing a mix with the morning time and this.
Thank you. I love that idea, and I love that you all are thinking, forward-thinking about how to maximize time. Because yes, I do see lots of parents in car riders line waiting to get in school. So that was very, very innovative. And I do want to say thank you to our school principals and our teachers for a phenomenal job. This presentation really showed us where we can put our focus in, where we can spend some money, I like some money, where we can spend some money to be able to support our schools. And especially in the interventionists. So I really would like for us to be able to get some information and some feedback from HR. I heard mentioned that we're doing some recruitment for some of those positions with veteran teachers and some of our retired teachers, and I think that's phenomenal. But I really would like for us to look at how we can pour our money into spending to recruit interventionists. I've heard from several principals that that is definitely a great need. So thank you all for sharing that.
Well, and elementary has really made a concerted effort and has Dr. Suber to make sure those positions were at a good starting point for the school year. But I can't say that for middle school. In middle school, we did not have a reading and a math interventionist. We're either or. We do have some schools that have both, but in many cases, they've had to absorb those positions to cover shortages. And I know you are always very interested in how we spend ESSR funds. And I want you to know that we have been spending ESSR funds to address learning loss. Most recently, we've also done a lot of training that we didn't mention with TI calculators and extensive training with middle and high school teachers. These different things that we've talked to you about with addressing additional time, the different materials and resources we've also purchased such as HMH and other things. So we really tried to look at where there is a need and maximize those ESSR funds while we still have them.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Trap?
Yes, Ms. Porter.
One quick question with Focus Math, is that, when did that start?
Dr. Sean Suber, who is over.
That started back in 2018, 19.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All the way to the podium. Any other questions?
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank y'all for your support.
We'll now take a look at the draft agenda for the September 26th meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our next scheduled board meeting is September 26, 2023. The draft agenda includes our call to order, which is our first part of our agenda. Number two is approval of the agenda. Under Executive Session 3.1, is Public Session will be recessed, and the board will convene in Executive Session. We will then have Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases, which is 3.2. 3.3, Public Session will resume at 6:30 PM. We will then move to Inspirational Moments and our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Special Recognitions. Item number six will be our Consent Agenda, where we will approve the Consent Agenda, which will include approval of minutes from the previous meeting, classified employment releases and in-district transfers, and capital improvement update, followed by public participation. Then voting on Executive Session items, so 8.1, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. Item 8.2, as needed for items discussed in Executive Session. Number nine will be unfinished business, action requested. Since we have taken off item 8.1 of the current agenda, we will remove that item from the draft agenda. We will then go to number 10, new business, no action requested. We will give a report of high school achievement data. We should be released before the next meeting. And we will give a back-to-school report. We'll next move into agenda items for the next meeting, which will look at the draft agenda items for our meeting on October 10 of 2023. If needed, we will have a second public participation time. If needed, a second executive session time. And if needed, we will vote on executive session items. Once that's done, we will move to Board and Superintendent Comments, and then the meeting will be adjourned.
Thank you. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the September 26, 2023 agenda or to a future agenda?
Chairman Trap?
Mrs. Washington.
I'd like to make a motion for us to have an update on the attendance policy. There seems to still be a lot of confusion from the public. I have, I would, I've sent in a series of questions. What has changed? Apparently, if nothing has changed. I've heard parents believing that they could, that last year they were told 20 absences. So I really would like to get some feedback from administration about this policy because I thought it was 10, I mean, 10 days, and I've thought it's been that way forever. So if we could get an update to find out where this confusion is, we even heard tonight a student said that she was not able to obtain absences. So I would just like for us to be very clear in what this is supposed to be. I absolutely appreciate administration for, Dr. Moore, for all of the messaging that we've sent out. It is, it's very critical, but I believe that we need to really be very clear and on one accord for this policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Trap?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Dr. Moore?
Yes. I would like for us to have a discussion around dress code. And maybe Dr. Moore could talk with the high school principals. I had an opportunity to visit a few of the high schools, and boy, did I see a whole lot of things I really didn't want to see when I'm walking behind and sometimes in front with just private parts, just really hanging out at the high school level. So I would love for us to go back and revisit the dress code policy as well as have a conversation with the high school principals around that, just to see how they feel, their take on it. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Washington.
I wanted to make a motion to have the attendance policy added, so.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Agostini to add a discussion on, or a presentation and discussion on attendance policy to the next board meeting. Is that what you want up there, Mrs. Washington? Vote of seven yes, zero no, the motion carries. That will be on the next board meeting agenda. Is there anything else anyone would like to add or change on the agenda?
Mr. Trap? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Ms. Porter?
Mr. Trap, I too would like to hear about the perspective from our principals about the dress codes, the high school. But I'd like for us not to discuss it until we have some data from those principals. I would really want to hear what they have to say. So that first, and then talk about it at the board meeting.
And I agree with that. That's why I didn't make a motion, because I want Dr. Moore to have a conversation first and then bring it back to us. So thank you for that.
All right, is there anything else we'd like to do with the agenda?
Mr. Trap?
Yes, Ms. Washington.
And this doesn't have to be for an agenda item, but I would love for us to get an update from HR. We've heard tonight that we still, this is still a problem, and I know that it's statewide, it's citywide. But I would love to find out what recruitment efforts are actually working. I know that we've had a lot of virtual recruitment fairs. I'd love to hear, for us to get an update. It can be in a board brief. But to find out what's working with that, are we seeing the high numbers? I've heard from several people who have applied for jobs, they're not hearing anything back. And so I would just like for us to get an update of that. Like I said, it can be in a board brief or at a future meeting. So I just want to put that on record.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Trap?
Ms. Porter?
I'm going to put some specifics on that. I also want to know about, when it comes to HR, the 16, how many steps does a leader have to follow before hiring someone? I'd like for them to outline all the steps that they have to go through and so that we can see that picture. Something that has been brought to my attention was a requirement of speaking to a reference even though they may not have a need for that. Say they want to hire someone, and there's a, there may be a requirement to make phone calls and phone tag to hear from someone who's already completed a reference. They've already interviewed, they want to hire the person. So that particularly, but I want the 16 steps or whatever the steps are outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would suggest that everybody email myself and the superintendent with some of these things, just so we have a paper trail on it. Because we definitely need to talk about these things. Anything else we want to add or do anything with the agenda? All right, well, we will now move to Board and Superintendent Comments, and we will start with Mrs. Nash.
Okay. Well, first I want to say, I see all the principals are gone, but want to thank all of them for coming tonight. And our educational staff, academic staff, for the data that you guys provided tonight was spot on. Thank you so much for that, and I love that you guys had a really concise plan. So thank you for doing that presentation. Also sincere thank you to everybody that attended tonight's meeting in person and online. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go to Dallas for a work thing and then head right over to the South Carolina School Board Association Law Conference. But while I was at my other conference, they were talking about AI and how students in the job market that's literally already here would be behind if we weren't already discussing AI in school. And it was really interesting to see that my work and my work here collide. But it was great. I had a conversation with Dr. Moore, and she said that they were already discussing AI, and I think that's pretty phenomenal. So kudos to Dr. Grant because I heard she led a charge on that. Is that, is that right? Yeah, yeah, so that was awesome. So also, one of the things I want to say, I'm going to just speak from the heart, I'm going to get off the cuff here for a minute. Yesterday was 9/11, and it makes you, it makes you ponder. That was a somber day for everyone, and there were so many heroes from that. But one of the greatest parts of that was the American spirit and the unity that took place. And it didn't matter what color you were, it didn't matter your race, it didn't matter your creed, it didn't matter any of that. But I will say, that day for me, I never realized more how fragile freedom is. And tonight, I will say that I feel that was a little bit dashed here in this district because we stepped on choice for parents and students. And I heard some things about students being bullied. And if I could tell the horror stories about students of faith, it'd make your head spin. But you don't hear about those stories because nobody tells them. And perhaps, maybe after all this is over, that's what I'll do. I'll tell those stories so that everybody can see that the choices we make here tonight, and as we've been talking about safe spaces for everyone, that we have left off people of faith, and that's people of any faith. That being said, lastly, for anyone interested, and I want to say this to students of faith, don't let what happened here tonight stop you from being bold in your faith. But if you're interested, see you at the polls on Wednesday, September 27. It's student-initiated, it's student-organized, and it's student-led. And students meet at the flagpole, and they, before school, lift up their friends, their families, their schools, and their nation to God and for unity. So that's all I have to say. I hope you all have a great night. God bless.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Washington?
Yes, so I want to thank everybody for attending. Thank you, Mr. Gatsin, I know principals are, you're still here, for just inspiring us tonight. I want to give a huge shout-out to the class of 2003 for all of our Richland 2 high schools. You all are celebrating 20 years for graduating. And I want to recognize Khalid Galman, she, I think she sent out an email. But she is a Spring Valley graduate, and she organized the South Carolina HBCU Alumni Alliance. And they are thrilled to announce this Saturday their HBCU 5K Walk and Run, which is going to be held downtown Columbia. This exciting event aims to celebrate HBCU excellence, to promote health and wellness, and foster engagement. And if you're not able to attend, definitely look up the Soda City app and find out more information about upcoming events. I also want to just share, I love highlighting nonprofits in our community. And many people don't realize, but one in two moms actually don't have access to diapers. Emma's Diaper Boutique is a local nonprofit based right here in northeast Columbia, and they are hosting a diaper drive in honor of National Diaper Awareness Week. And you can drop those items, or you can email me to find out ways to drop those items off. And I also want to say, in the spirit of faith, mark your calendars for October 11. Our high schools are joining together, and they're bringing together students across Richland 2 and across Richland County for the National Fields of Faith. It's happening at Westwood High School from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. I want to give a shout-out to our FCA and all of the amazing things that they're doing in our high schools to support students and to give them those opportunities to learn about how to live a life in Christ. And again, thank you all so much for coming out to attend, and God bless Richland 2.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Dr. Scott?
I'd like to say once again, thank you to all of the principals who were here this evening. Also want to say thank you for, Mr. Gatsin for presenting. My nephew attends his school, so he's going to be very excited to know that you came and read that book to the board. So thank you for that. Also to the presenters tonight, thank you so much for the detailed information. Really took a deep dive into that information, so thank you guys so much. You have given us so much to look forward to, and we do appreciate that. To all of the participants who came out tonight to speak, thank you so much for sharing your concerns, your thoughts, and your feedback. Sometimes we don't always agree, but I truly believe that that's the way the world is. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. But that's okay, because even in our own households, we don't agree always with our kids or with our spouses, but we don't throw the baby out with the water. We work through. but we don't throw the baby out with the water. We work through and we continue to move forward. So I just want to say thank you for all that you do and all that you will continue to do. Have a good night.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. Mrs. McFadden?
I just want to say, thank you to our presenters of education, all of the data that we have received in ELA and math and science. I love that information, because it does really show us exactly where we are and where we need to go. And I know that that, this is going to take about seven years of data to try to catch up and excel, so we're excited to see that we are moving forward. And thank you for the due diligence that y'all have done, been in the work with this. And just like Ms. Coleman said, you know, they've looked at it, I'm sure, from every angle, and we appreciate all the work and time and effort that you guys have put into this. Some people may not be numbers people, and it might be difficult to look at this, but this information is really crucial, and the way you disseminate it, it makes it very easy to understand, and I appreciate that. So the potential legislation that we will be looking at will be that Read to Succeed and making sure that met and non-met area in the bottom level is being looked at. And with that, I will say that as the board legislative contact, I am going to COSPA at the end of the month. So this will be an issue that I would like to address about this legislation change for this Read to Succeed, as well as some other topics that the board and I will discuss. Also, we did go to the SCSSBA Law Conference, and we learned a lot of information. I think we're going to be presenting a lot of that information at our board retreat toward the end of the month. But I want to say thank you to everyone who come for administration in all levels, for all the work that you do, principals, and even staff, everyone that just shows up and shows up every day for our students, because our parents are vested, our community is vested. Even though we see people come and go at different highlights and different points of the season for different issues and reasons, we're all here to work together as for our community, and we all know where each other stands. We know the hot topics, we know the cold ones, we know what we can do, what we can't do, and just working together and getting to know each other in this one community is very helpful. So I appreciate everyone. Thank y'all for an awesome day. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Porter?
Thank you all again. I want to just echo some of those sentiments that my colleagues have shared. Thank you for the academic update. Please continue to share with us what your needs are as far as advocating, especially at the State House and for different legislative representatives. I know we made the decision to have Ms. McFadden as our rep in that area, and I was just talking to her, or whispering to her to the side about how that bit of information about making decisions for textbooks and materials, but yet not having the funds to fully get those. So that's something that we want to make sure that we're advocating for and making sure that we have the funds from our state when state decisions are made. Also, thank you to our reading coaches and our curriculum specialists, our media center specialists, response to intervention educators, and those teaching assistants that we hire for RTI. You all did your thing. When I looked at that ELA data, it was overwhelming with how much growth that I saw. And even with my own kids, I was really impressed in ELA. And I like that you're focusing on those bubble kids, the kids that float either way. It's continuing to be something that we talk about, and we've talked about it for ages. I just want to make sure that the resource, that we have the resources to move those kids. And so please continue to share that and be that voice. Also, thank you to our leaders who came today and those who spoke during public participation. We appreciate you, and we definitely listen to the things that you've shared, and we try to respond to everyone. I know I can speak for myself, that I try to respond to everyone who writes me and emails me about your point of view. So thank you. And Mr. Gadsden, you read the book Why Not You, and as I was listening to some of our students today, I was thinking to myself, why not them? And they were just so impressive, just at how confidently they spoke. And I was just really impressed with how they're growing and becoming great young adults. So thank you for that, and that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Mrs. Agostini?
Well, I'll start off by saying what a treat it was to have all of our principals here. It was great to see them come out and participate in the meeting tonight. A special thank you to Mr. Gadsden. You are phenomenal. I also want to recognize and thank all of those that came out for public participation. But I really, I want to recognize our student advocates. They were phenomenal. Ellis Savitz, Maxberg, Sam Weiss, and Mr. O'Connor, and to all of their teachers throughout the year, job well done. And I will finish by just saying a happy 60th birthday to my brother Tom Burke in Fenton, Michigan. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Chairman. So, you know, my North Star is always to celebrate our students. And I realize that the meeting has been long tonight, and people are tired. But I want to send you out with some good news about what we are doing in our district for our students. So I want to start off with, the Richland II School District's staff members hosted a commemoration of the 22nd anniversary of 9/11. So we began at 8:46 a.m., and it ended at 9:03 a.m., near the flagpole at the interest of R2I2. It was truly a moving tribute that provided a time of reflection and remembrance. And we were blessed to have representatives from our law, our local law enforcement, fire protection, and military communities. So I have a short video that I want to show to you on this particular event that we conducted. And before we show it, I want to leave you with a thought that I shared with our district staff. It is great that we take time to remember, so that we never forget the sacrifices that our first responders made. But there is a group of first responders that people don't talk about, and that is our teachers, our educators in the building. You see, on the day of 9/11, I was a first-year teacher. And because I had just retired from the military about a year and a half, two years before that, my colleagues and students were coming to me to ask me, are we going to be okay? What, what's going to happen? Our kids needed to be reassured. Our staff needed to be reassured. Our teachers, our principals, our classified staff stepped in the gap and comforted students during that day. So while they may not have the official title of being a first responder, they are first responders, because they meet the needs of our students every single day, no matter what that student brings with them. But on this particular day, they were there to be the comfort to students and to each other. So let's watch this video.
God bless America, land that I love.
Today, we honor the memory of the 3,000 souls lost on September 11th, 2001, and we pay tribute to all patriots and their families who sacrificed their lives and freedom. Those killed at the Pentagon, New York City, and Shanksville, Pennsylvania will never be forgotten. America's army is the strength of the nation, and its men and women in uniform continue to epitomize resiliency, strength, and commitment to our country. Today, I would ask that you not only remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice, but remember the strength of our nation comes from us coming together as one. Shared experiences like 9/11 link us together, and these experiences are woven into the fiber of every citizen and family and the American people to bring us together.
Many of you have laid down your lives for strangers. Many of you have laid down your life for family, for friends. That's what happened after 9/11 and during 9/11. Not only were the first responders of 343 fire members that was lost, but the 3,000-plus lives that were lost on that day.
I was a school resource officer at Ridgeview High School when the first plane hit the tower. This is one of the most important days to me, and since that incident, I always made sure that I go to represent the different first responders.
We get up every morning, and we clock in, knowing that we're going to lay down our lives for those that we don't know.
We do appreciate y'all inviting us down here to be part of this. And thank y'all for remembering this day, remembering our fallen brothers.
I'm a product of Richland School District II. I have family that works here. My stepmom is down right here. My wife is a fifth-grade schoolteacher at Lake Carolina. So 9/11 to me just runs deep in family, means family and community.
Today, we stand here honoring the lives that were lost, because we honor our comrades who have made the ultimate sacrifice, so that we could have the freedoms that we enjoy. While we lost over 3,000 people on that day, the impact on their families, on their friends, on their colleagues, on our nation, goes beyond the sacrifices that they made. 9/11 is not just a day for us to remember, but it's a day for us to reflect and to move forward. Thank you. So I hope that video just gave you just an opportunity to reflect on what that day means. Now, changing gears, I want to share some data with you. Of the 1.6 million elementary school teachers in America, 19.5% are men, and 2% are men of color. So how powerful is it to have two hearing impaired male educators of color teaching students with and without disabilities? So round top elementary, the principal there has been intentional in hiring educators, and in particular, hiring educators that represent our students, educators that have a disability. Why? Because representation matters. So Tim L. Betton and Harrison Love are purpose-driven educators who are hard of hearing and hearing impaired, yet every single day, they come to work and advocate for all students. So let's watch this video on these two outstanding educators.
I use hard of hearing, because I myself, I am hard of hearing, and I don't look at what they can't do, I look at what they can do. Like, for me, I can hear as well as a lot of people, but that's not what I focus on. Focus on what I'm able to do myself, and what I'm able to even do for others.
Teaching has had purpose and meaning to my life. However, it's just rewarding when a child, hammerweight, works through challenge or show growth. Whatever their level, I'm thankful to work with children who continually inspire me with their effort and creativity.
My drive and purpose would be just to make sure I'm a difference, a positive difference, I should say, in someone's life, okay? If I can just change one kid's life, I believe I've done my job.
During my time as a hearing impaired student, they provide me with safe, supportive, and valued environment. Creating an inclusive classroom requires everyone to be open-minded and accepting of others.
I went to Guy Depp University, go Bison. So I am fluent in American Sign Language. I do teach bits and pieces of American Sign Language in my classes, and I think it's a good way for the kids to communicate without them having to scream from way across the room.
I use a lot of PowerPoint slides that include a lot of visual and animation and step-by-step videos that include closed captions for both hearing and hearing impaired.
I had teachers that, that changed my life, and teachers that made me feel included. Because I did have teachers with me being hard of hearing that made me feel like I was separate from that group. And so it drives me to make sure I never see a kid the way that I was treated. I was the kid that would get put to another table while everyone else is doing something else, because I had special accommodations, you know. I'd, no, put that kid with that, with that group. And I want to make sure that I'm an advocate for that kid if there is ever a need for that.
Don't let discouragement stop your purpose and dreams. If they tell you that you don't have it, prove they're wrong.
So aren't those two great educators that are inspiring our students to move beyond whatever challenges that they bring with them every single day in the classroom? So now, I want to transition to celebrating some of our adults that have gone above and beyond. You know, our teachers work hard every single day, and when teachers take on additional responsibilities, we should recognize that. So Rainey Ali Ott, who is a teacher at EL Wright Middle School, she completed the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust Teacher Fellowship. So Ms. Otto, Otto, is one of only seven teachers, seven teachers in the state of South Carolina to complete the fellowship. She began the fellowship in 2020, and she completed it last month. Now, she teaches eighth-grade social studies at EL Wright, and she says working with the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust as a part of their teacher fellowship program has been a rewarding and memorable experience. I quote, "I have grown not only as an educator, but as a student myself, and the lessons that I have learned regarding Holocaust pedagogy and best teaching practices in general have been invaluable. The council has also provided me with a variety of educational opportunities, meetings with esteemed Holocaust historians, and a plethora of resources to bring back to my classroom." As a part of this fellowship, Ms. Ott and the other teachers were required to participate in monthly meetings over the course of two years. All participants completed at least 200 hours of reading and research in addition to completing three graduate-level courses through the University of South Carolina. Participants also conducted two field studies, one to Washington DC to visit the United States Holocaust Memorial Museum. And if you've never been there and you have the opportunity to go, I highly recommend it. It will truly move your soul. And then they also completed a trip to Poland to visit key historical and cultural sites related to the Holocaust and Jewish history. So we congratulate Ms. Ott and celebrate her commitment to excellence and expanding her knowledge. And then, last but not least, we have talked about three different makers that are educators. I want to shift now to an award-winning administrator, because our administrators make sacrifices every day for us and for our students. So the South Carolina Association of Black School Educators just awarded their 2023 Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year Award to Jackson Creek Elementary's own, Katrina Smith. And we want to say congratulations to Katrina for a job well done. Thank you very much, and that concludes my comments, Mr. Trapp.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I would just like to read a few things that I find important. First thing I want to read is the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. It reads in part, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." The South Carolina Constitution reads in part, "The General Assembly will make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Something we've talked about some, we've heard some in public participation. It was the Moss versus Spartanburg County School District 7 ruling by the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. It's 21 pages long, but I've just pulled out a couple of sentences I want to share. Says, "A public school permitted students to leave school grounds to receive religious instruction off-campus and agreed to receive reports of the students' attendance at those classes. Under these circumstances, the Supreme Court, and this court, concluded that public schools did no more than accommodate their schedules to a program of outside religious instruction. Indeed, the court suggested that if public schools were not permitted to accommodate the religious desires of students and parents in this fashion, the result would be an unconstitutionally hostile environment toward religion. Government would find itself effectively and unconstitutionally promoting the absence of religion over its practice." In another paragraph, it reads, "Also important to our conclusion is the governing principle that private religious education is an integral part of the American school system. Indeed, states are constitutionally obligated to allow children and parents to choose whether to fulfill their compulsory education obligations by attending a secular public school or a religious private school." And the concluding paragraph in that case states, "Pursuant to the Release Time Credit Act, which the South Carolina General Assembly enacted on its findings that the free exercise of religion is important to the intellectual, moral, civic, and ethical development of students in South Carolina, Spartanburg County School District 7 adopted a release time program which is administered in a religiously neutral manner. We see no evidence that the program has had the effect..." neutral manner. We see no evidence that the program has had the effect of establishing religion or that it has entangled the school district in religion. As was the General Assembly and school district's purpose, the program properly accommodates religion without establishing it in accordance with the First Amendment." And I would just like to conclude my remarks with reading the oath that school board members take, as contained on the South Carolina School Board Association's website. It reads, "I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. So, help me God." May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Trapp?
Mrs. Washington?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by, I don't, Dr. Scott. Is there any discussion? Board members, let's just take a hand vote. All in favor? Mrs. Washington, are you in favor? Okay. All right, the motion, or the vote is seven, yes and zero no. The meeting is adjourned.